Okay, you're all set.
All right, I will call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Would our secretary like to take attendance?
Joe. John.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Jen.
Here.
I'm here.
Mike.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Peter.
Here.
And Mary.
It's a full house. All right, we're going to move on to the next item of the agenda, which is COVID-19 updates and decisions. I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent.
I apologize, I'm waiting. Oh, there it goes. All right, well, good evening, and we are trying to practice what we preach. We're trying to have a little bit of social distance here. We recognize that we may have to alter some of our meeting presentations, and we'll talk about that as we go forward. But first of all, let me start by saying, we have to thank the entire Region 12 staff, students, families, you all, our community leaders, our health departments. Nothing was done in isolation. And to say that every step along the way, only thing I got was not challenge, but it was not only support, but how can we help? And I think that is only a credit to our community, the spirit that exists in it, and where we can go, given the challenge. I forwarded you all, I don't know if you got a chance to look at your emails before you came, but we have a junior and a senior right now who are presenting a challenge to all of our SHAPOG students. And the challenge is, is a way to connect our students, a way to avoid cabin fever. And what they're going to do is, every day, they post a little challenge. So the first day it is, what do you do in your free time? And they're looking for funny responses, they're looking for entertaining responses. The class with the most participation will be rewarded when we return to school with a field trip to Steep Rock, ending with a barbecue. We're going to unite over this. And I think that goes to say the credibility of our students. So, I want to talk to you about some of the logistics that have occurred. On Friday, we did an early dismissal. I know a lot of schools had closed down. Our decision to do an early dismissal was to allow students to come in, get their devices, any students who needed their medication. It allowed our nurses to make certain that people had everything they needed in advance of our closure. At this time, we do not have any confirmed cases within our towns that have been noted, nor do we have anything within our schools. So I do feel like it was a calculated risk and done safely. It was a scramble, trying to get all the devices and chargers and everything. And again, credit to our tech department, credit to our nurses to make certain everyone was contacted, and we had a way to make certain that everything was ready based on our closure. We have everything in place if our closure has to go longer. It is our hope that we can, at this time, return when Governor Lamont has put forth. So our original return date was March 30th. The governor's order has stretched the closure to March 31st. We would be looking at an April 1st return date at this time. Everything is fluid, however, that is what we are anticipating. During the shutdown, we have made provisions for the year-round employees. We right now have our custodians who are doing the deep clean within our schools. Once an area is cleaned, they actually are putting duct tape or masking tape across the doors, so that we teachers know when you come back in, it's sealed fresh. And as they go through the building, at that point, it is cleaning to exit the buildings. We do want sterile environments. We have all of our phones forwarded to the homes of our clerical workers. We are working remotely. We are conducting business. It is just in a way that we are making certain social distancing is happening. Additionally, I want people to know that, beginning on April 2nd, that starts our 180 days. So even if we make it all the way to June, April 2nd is our date in which we can return to paying people at their regular expected rates. Right now, for our 10 snow days, we cannot double pay people. So because they will get paid later in the school year, we are not paying right now. Nicole has done an amazing job working with individuals to make certain they understand implications. We have also found emergency funds, where if anybody is coming against hardship, we can certainly find a way that we are supporting our people. We are an organization about people, and we will care for our people. And I have to tell you, the partnerships that have been built, we've actually watched them grow and flourish in this time, and I think that's a credit to relationships. Additionally, we have partnered with Ed- Advance to provide meals for our students who participate in the school national lunch. And we also had a teacher who, she, when she read that, she reached out to me, she said, "My husband and I will bring it locally." If there's anything we want to make certain that we're providing for our families. In talking with our leaders of the towns, they are also offering to do deliveries as needed, as well as offering some grocery cards for those who maybe hit hard during this time. The governor did forgive the 180-day school requirement. However, this does not mean we just get to say, "We wash our hands and we can just start, you know, the, he'll forgive us and we can continue to miss days." We have to show that we have expanded all efforts and all available days to us before the 180-day waiver starts to kick in. Greg has signed the waiver, I've signed the waiver to put forth. We know it's going to be granted, we just want to make certain all paperwork is in place, and that we are in compliance as we move forward. The question's coming up about distance learning. And Mike, thank you so much for all your sharing, because he really, you want to talk about being on the front line of it, he's experiencing this. And so it's given us a head start in working with other superintendents. But right now, the challenge is that, that concept of equity. We have to make certain we can provide for all of our learners, which means learners with exceptionality. And how are we meeting IEPs? And how are we making certain that they have availability to the services that they are deserving of? We are working with the state, we are figuring out ways, the federal government is getting involved, because it's one thing when the state releases it, but when you're working with students who have special needs, you're working under FAP, which, you know, the Free and Appropriate Education. You're also working under IDEA. All of these are federal mandates. So we are working very closely with the federal government to find out how we can meet the needs of all of our students and actually count the school days. So we are working towards those. There are not answers yet, but I don't want anybody to think that we're waiting for other people to give us answers. Ali O'Hara has been working with our families, we have plans in place. How are we going to go about creating virtual PPTs? So, those things are in place. And again, these are the moments in which we are trying to get everybody together, look at the resources we have, and make certain we're supporting our most compromised population during this time. And again, we recognize we do not have a case right now. This is about prevention and closing in order to make certain that we are giving our communities the best chance for health during this time. So, this time, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'd just like to add one thing to that, if I could. I think probably we've reached a point in this where we really should consider not having meetings in person any longer. The governor has given us this option. I, and I'm going to be sharing these with you, I couldn't, I didn't have the access to get it to you today, but I'll send you all of the orders the government has signed, the governor has signed. These are very critical and important orders that are going to allow us to do better in this, during this epidemic. One of them is, is the suspension of the in-person open meeting requirements under the statute. So the statutes that say that you have to have open meetings and you have to have the access of the general public are now suspended, with this exception. You can have your meetings by telephonic, video, or various different types of means, but you have to do certain things. One of those things is, you have to give the ability of the public to listen to it if it's by audio, to see it if you can do it video. You have to give them some ability to see it in real time. You have to post that on your website within seven days of the meeting. You have to make it available on your website. So if you're going to record it, which is what we do, we video-record them, then we would allow the public to, we have to figure out some way for them to have access to them. Maybe we could use the public access television station, I don't know. But we have to figure out a way to let them see it if we're going to video it, and certainly hear it, if we could, and we were thinking about having a call-in number, so people could actually call in and hear what's going on. It's relatively easy to do that, and at no expense or no great expense to the, to the region. So, yeah.
Would it make sense if we audio-record it and put it on the YouTube, since the YouTube channel that we always share our board meetings, it would just be without any visual?
Can we do it in real time on that?
I don't know about real time. We can certainly work with Ben on that, but it's, I think that that's an opportunity that we may have.
Yeah, I, we certainly, I mean, we certainly can post the YouTube, post it on YouTube immediately, but the problem is, is it says that the public has to have the ability to view or listen to each meeting or proceeding in real time by telephone, video, or other technology. So even if we're videoing the meeting, it doesn't mean that they can't be allowed to call in and listen to it on the telephone. I think that probably, you'll be able to do that. If any such, and it's, we've also got to post the agenda in advance, and any materials have to be posted. You're going to use at the meeting, have to be posted 24 hours in advance. And any speaker taking part in the meeting shall clearly state their name and title before speaking on each occasion that they speak. So, so I think they mean speakers and not board members in the process of conducting the meeting. I don't think we have to announce our names, but certainly the speakers do. So I think it's, if we can get these protocols in place, we can then start having remote meetings. And I think we should. I think we should do it, number one, because it's the right thing to do, number two, because there may be an order coming down telling us we have to do it soon, and number three, because it sets a good example, and I think we should, we should do that. We need to encourage people to basically hunker down. That's where we are with this thing, and that's the way we're going to survive it with the fewest potential casualties. I think we owe that, we owe that to our community, we owe that to our students, and that's what I'd like to do. So, that, I think, is a, is a critical, a critical item, and I think when you review these orders, you will see the broad sweep of it, and the fact that this has really been a day for governors to have to step up and do their job, and I think we are proud to have seen that in our case. And our local communities, our selectmen, our boards of selectmen, our town governments have done an astounding job of trying to get on top of this very difficult proceeding and get out there and help people. And I think that we have stepped up and done our part, and we need to continue to do it. I think your superintendent of schools has done a masterful job in trying to deal with this. I think she's been on the phone virtually every day with other superintendents and the governor on constant conference calls to stay in the loop of what's been happening, and it is a fluid situation that keeps changing. And we're, the one thing that we're going to try to do, to do a little bit better is to try to get more information out to you more quickly, and I'm going to try to help in that effort to see if we can get that done. But there are literally days when, when the administration of the schools are running around trying to cover multiple meetings and multiple issues and multiple problems. And, and don't forget, we have to see if we can, we can, we're also concerned about providing an education to students who are basically being told to stay home, and we don't know when it's going to end, hopefully April 1st, but, you know, it could take longer, because everything seems to be moving. So, I want to thank everyone, and I especially want to thank our, our parents. They have really faced a constantly changing, difficult situation, issues of childcare, issues of, issues of education for their students and all these things, and they have done it with grace, goodwill, and patience. And this is the community we live in, and this is the community stepping up, and I think we should all consider ourselves proud to live here. I know I'm very proud of them and very appreciative of, of the effort. And we are focused, as this board, I hope, on one thing, and that is, getting our students the best education, the excellent education they've come to expect and come to demand and deserve. And I hope we can continue to keep our focus on that. We all can't, we're not panicking. What we are doing is, we're trying to make sure we get this done the right way. And I just want to thank you all for all your efforts and all, we'll try to get information out sooner. So, any questions? Yes, Mary?
I always say that on Facebook that people have to help people that have children that can't leave their home. So if you want to volunteer to do that, call Jim Rettor.
Okay, thank you. Pete?
I don't know, the superintendent wants to discuss this right now, but the special education, is that a topic you want to be drawn to, Jen, that we're excited about?
The, the special education students in response to the COVID-19? We, we can certainly have that conversation. You know, we can't talk about specifics, but as far as, if we want to talk about any of the things we need to consider, we can certainly open it up under the COVID-19 conversation.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, John?
God forbid, I pray this never happens, but what would be the plan if students don't return, possibly until after graduation date? I mean, how does that affect seniors? How does that affect testing? How does that affect the whole end-of-year process?
I would, I would tell you that we would have to spend a considerable amount of time, and one of the things that we would be able to do is have the teachers actually figure out some ways that we would have to do something called curriculum compacting, figuring out how do we cover things that would have happened at the end of the year to the beginning of the year. I know it's premature to talk about that at this point, but if that possibility starts to come up, we would have to look at, how do we get back some of the learning that is lost? How do we cover some of the ground that we weren't able to do for this, this end of the year? But that said, that's where we also open up the distance learning opportunities that we can in order to allow for some additional instruction. Right now, all of the instruction, all the supplemental materials are review materials. We're not moving the curriculum forward, we're treating it like a snow day. In the event we expand those days, and in working with our state, it either is, how are we pushing education forward using distance learning? And again, that means all of our learners, how are we pushing forward? And then also looking at next year, so we're looking at this as, and it's a fluid year, how do we pick up some of the lost instruction and how do we move forward with that? I think that's going to take a considerable amount of planning. And for right now, the part that we want to figure out how to do the planning on is the distance learning. Your question about graduation, the, I'm going to say, good news right now is, we had set the graduation date for June 20th. By state statute, we can still graduate our students on June 20th. Hopefully, at that point, we'll be able to have crowds more than 100 to do those things. Otherwise, it's going to be a very sad graduation. But we will be working with the guidelines that we have. There's an illusion of normalcy that we're going to try to have, but it is an illusion. It is the attempt to make certain students have the learning that is necessary to move forward, but this is disruptive in the learning process. I, I'm not going to sugarcoat that.
Mike?
Again, I don't know if you'll agree with me, but one of the things that I've seen recently coming from the state is kind of a refreshing lack of bureaucracy. And I think flexibility and kind of a willingness to let kindness and compassion maybe lead the way, which isn't always, I think, the state's mantra, maybe they pay lip service to that, but, you know, the fact that, you know, with the most recent edict from the Department of Education saying that we could move forward with distance learning and kind of looking at the language, where they're saying things like, "Move ahead, we trust you, we trust local superintendents to be doing the right things for children, and we're not looking for gotchas." I mean, that's, that was the tenor that I seem to see in the most recent communication.
I, I think the state department's not looking. We, we do have to recognize that we are opening ourselves up if we cannot provide equity. I do worry about that component of it, that at some point, we have the legal obligation to support all of our students. And that's where the state has been. They, they have really been supportive and are trying to be creative, but the federal guidelines and to make certain that we are doing things legally. We are working very closely with Chipman and Goodwin. We are working with the superintendents around us to figure out, I can tell you, the answer is not easy, and so we're all trying to figure out what are the opportunities in order to make us go forward.
Yes, Lisa?
I'm just, I'm just curious, because as you watch the news, you hear about other districts saying that they're doing online learning or, or distance learning. Is, so is the equity issue, and I understand it, but is that statewide? Because how can some districts have that and not all of them?
And that, again, comes to working with families. They may have done virtual PPTs. They may have already established that with understandings. I can tell you, some have gotten very creative and actually have made themselves a little vulnerable in some of that creativity. And we want to have, like, for me, if we can solve this, I would love to move towards active learning. This is not where the resistance is here. It's a matter of, we need to make certain that we have planned, we have worked with our families, and we are contracting for what is an abnormal situation.
So what would you recommend? Because I've had parents ask me, it's, we're not doing distance learning because we weren't ready, or they don't have it in place. And what would be a proper response? Because I want it to be a good one, because you are trying, and I want to say the right thing.
Well, I appreciate, I can tell you, we do have a plan. I can tell you that even the teachers, when they were working out their planning for the supplemental learning, it was like taking a race car and putting it in neutral. They were ready to go, and how do we do this? And what holds us back is, when you start to ask the question, okay, how do you help that student who typically has somebody right there supporting them? And that computer screen isn't going to be enough.
Right.
And, you know, how do we get some of those, you know, OT, PT, speech and language? How are we going to take, when a student requires a one-on-one teacher's aid, how do we support some of those things? We, we do have the devices in the hands of our students, but we also have some of our younger students where, how do you guarantee every parent can sit there with that child? You know, we polled everybody with, what, do you have a device? And when they answer yes, well, how many children do you have? That also starts to play out what can happen. I can tell you, we sat down, we talked about having times where teachers have to post it by a certain time. It would be on the Google Classroom. We would have a certain amount of independent activity, it would have to be turned in. So, it really is, how do we handle the exceptional? And I think once we know we can say that and do it with legal, sound precedent, we want to move forward. So to say that we are not prepared is not a complete truth. We're stymied by some of the challenges for how do you make it equitable?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do you have anything else on COVID-19?
No, I'll talk down the road.
Okay, we'll move on to field trip notifications.
Okay. Well, obviously, we've had some alterations in some of our plans, so I wanted to notify you. At this time, we do have on the books that a Boston Science Museum, science trip for the eighth grade is on the books right now for May 7th. Let's see what happens, but it's on the books right now. The senior class trip that they have come before you twice, they have tried twice. And even then, they even tried for a third time to make it happen yet again. And right now, it is postponed to be determined. We are still trying, but so far, keep running into, again, those roadblocks. But I have to say, a huge, huge thank you to Heather Hurley and Betsy O'Neil, who have now planned this trip four times. So I, I need to thank them. And our trip to New York City for our 11th grade Spanish students, that has been canceled. There is no plan to reschedule that, as it is. I wanted to notify the board as we did notify you when they were happening. I'm notifying you of the changes.
All right, do you want to talk about anything else that's been canceled here? I'm sorry, Mike?
Megan, just a quick question about the senior class trip. If we do unfortunately have to, to end up canceling it, is there any plan to refund the, some of the money? I mean, as you know, some of the students-
It's considerable money.
-paid, paid money for, for that senior class trip. I realize some of it may be lost because of deposits that are non-refundable, but I'm just hoping that, that there is some, I can get the word out, that there is some hope that a significant amount would go, go back to the students.
And, and I know that some of the decisions we were making was in the attempt of, before we would lose the deposits, so I do know that that, again, we still are trying to reschedule it, but at least we've released the hold on the dates that we originally had.
I would just encourage the senior class to do something else if they can't go away, even if they threw a really great fun party at the pavilion with food and bouncy houses and kind of an old-school fun thing just before they graduate. I would encourage that and just hope that they could.
I'm going to tell you, this poor senior class-
I know.
-and I'm saying that with such love.
I know.
They have, right now-
And they've worked so hard the last four years to raise so much money.
They, they have done a hero's job, and I have to tell you, of, of anybody who we want to make certain, they have put the effort in. You want them to reap the rewards that they have sown for themselves. And I look, and every time something has changed-
Yeah.
-I cringe, because it is the senior class, and they have, you talk about resilience, you talk about them still smiling at us.
Yeah.
They are truly, truly, like, good characters, but it is one, if we can do something to make certain they have some joy-
Yes.
...in an event-
Yeah.
-I fully support that.
I do too.
Pete?
I don't know, I don't know what to say, but makes me want to hear it, it's a decent statement, and no virus, no, no, it's just, it was going to happen overnight, or it's been, it's been nine days, based on people who made their presentations today with president. The earliest, they said, would be a year. So, I don't see how you could plan any trips, or do anything, if the listening to the governor's speech on the fact that you just have serious issues, and the fact that nobody knows what the new face is.
I, I-
Or, or anything like that. So, although this is something, what, if you want to, you know, we're going to be doing, we do anything.
I, I don't disagree with you, Pete, and I can tell you right now, we're not putting down any extra money towards any of these things, so to say, we're still trying to, again, when I say it's the, the illusion of normalcy, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to make certain that if we're able to move forward, if things can happen, this is what we did. And we closed down in order to try to help the spread. You know, the statement was from Dr. Carter, the state epidemiologist, was, you close down early in order to have better health rates and survival rates for your community, and we responded to that. Whether we got ahead of it or where, that, that's still to be seen, but we do want to still plan for in the event we do get to come back, that, we don't want this to feel like a lost year.
Okay. Anything else? Well, on that happy note, let's move on to the motion to prevent outside vendors from utilizing school facilities until April 30, 2020, with the exception of aftercare. Do you want to talk about that at all?
Um, whereas we-
The font of our, all of our good news tonight?
We, we love our outside people, we love being a spot in which people can access community events. However, we also recognize that hosting community events at this time is slightly problematic. So, right now, the April 30th, seems like that right now was the governor's original statement for not having large groups gathered together, and the date he gave was April 30th. When I talked to the director of New Milford Hospital, I said, "Is that a realistic date?" He said, "It's a good educated guess." So, for following along with good educated guesses, at this point, I think it would be prudent of us not to give false hope to outside vendors to think that our facilities are able to be accessed. My hope is to access it by children, and, you know, get the necessities done, and then we'll go to the extra. But for right now, and I hate doing this for the communities who've done so much for us, but I think in a moment of public health, I think this is the best thing for the board to do.
All right, Jim?
I'm going to motion that the board, in abundance of caution in light of COVID-19, discontinue use of all school facilities by outside vendors through April 30, 2020. Provided that an exception may be made by the superintendent for aftercare of Region 12 students on days when school is in session.
Well done, moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All those, yeah, why don't you raise your hands, I think that makes sense. All those opposed? All those abstaining? That's unanimous, 12 to nothing. Nothing? I'm sorry? Oh, good, no one was opposed. It was 12 votes in favor and none again. Okay, and none abstaining. Before we get to the budget, I would like to just briefly talk about the AgSTEM construction project, because that's ongoing throughout this. That project will not stop as a result of this. It will continue to completion. However, at this point, with the exception of, you know, things like punch list items or the commissioning of the systems to make sure they work as advertised, they really are done inside this building. There's nothing, there's no ongoing construction work inside the greenhouse, inside the science labs, inside this part of the building, inside the, and the other end of the building and inside Building A. Building F has no ongoing construction except for change order work inside of it. They have finished the basic, the construction of the buildings. The only thing remains, there's some change order work in Building F. There's commissioning work in these buildings and any changes that have to be made after that. And then the outside work, which involves asphalt, seed planting and tree installation, and the finishing up of the site work around, around the site. That's all that remains, and then this project will be complete. And so they will not be in the buildings, and they have been asked to not be in the buildings for anything until students are returned to the building. So they will be, there will be no, no entry by their people, and in fact, the office that ONG occupies in the, next to the cafeteria in this building, they will be vacating that this week and moving into F building, where they will supervise the construction project from there for the duration of it. So we are pulling that to a close, and with any luck, we won't have them in the building at all during this period of time. There may be one slight exception to that. We're talking about the possibility of, if we can come up with a date of commissioning work at this end of the building, because it will allow us to get a better handle on whether there'll be any additional costs for the project. And so we may do that, just to be able to try them, working that with the superintendent, see if we can get that to work. So that's more or less where things are with that. So we're in pretty good shape on, on that project. And, you know, should be finished at, at some point, even though we have canceled our grand opening day of April 17th. Hopefully, that'll get rescheduled in May. We're hopeful that we'll be actually back in the building at some point, and that's where that is. Questions? All right, I guess we'll move on to consider the, and if, and if it's your will, adopt the superintendent's budget for 2021 as the Region 12 Board of Education budget and establish a district budget public hearing. At this point in time, it's the superintendent's suggested budget. If we are prepared to adopt it as our budget, then we will put it out to a public hearing, and then after that public hearing is concluded, we can make decisions about when, when and whether to send it to referendum. I would point out that the governor has by executive order extended the day for when schools have to adopt their budgets. So that has been extended by order of the, of the governor. So we're not as much under the gun as we'd like to be, but I think the more normalcy we can, we can project, the better. So I'm going to turn it over to-
Great, could you just tell us when that date has been extended to?
You would ask me that, and I, I have to, I have to find it in the order. So I'm not going to answer it now, but what I am going to do is turn it over to, to the Director of Finance, Nicole Grant, and the superintendent to entertain any discussion on this budget. Yes, Jim?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's proposed budget as presented to us on March 2nd, 2020.
I second the motion.
That would be as the Region 12 school budget?
Yes.
Okay. Moved, seconded. Is there further discussion? Julie.
Um, so I've thought about the budget, and obviously, it's not, we're not asking for a lot. But I also think what's about to hit our communities is much more than maybe what we thought when we first discussed the budget three or four weeks ago. And I think when people vote on this budget, it's likely to be the height of disarray. And it's not just about illness and loss of life, which is surely going to come here, but it's also about a huge, huge financial impact. And everything from our 401Ks to small businesses in our towns, to people who aren't going to get paid, who lose their jobs and so forth and so on. I think asking for the repairs is good, because we're asking for that money down the road, and I think that makes a lot of sense, because we have to hope that we'll recover from this. But even in listening to the governor tonight, we, because Curtis was home, I listened to his call, I saw the president talk about it could be now July or August before there's any recovery. And I would feel so much more comfortable going to my taxpayers and saying, we, we're asking for a flat budget this year. And yes, we're going for the, you know, 4 million down the road, but I just, I just can't in my, and I, and I know everyone's probably, most people here have made up their mind and they're going to vote for this, and I, I'm not saying it's a bad budget at all. And I'm not saying that we should dictate where the cuts should be. But I'm thinking if there's any way at all, we could just say to our taxpayers, we're not asking you for an increase this year, because this is an unprecedented, unbelievable situation. And health aside, finances is just, it's going to hit everyone really, really hard. So that's my position, that I'd really love for us to just go back and see if there's any way we could just make it flat. And I know we're not that far away from that, but I think it's about the optics and the message we send. And I think it could look that we're out of touch if, at the time when you go to pull the trigger and vote for this, that we're actually asking for more money on top of, you know, almost four and a half million dollars. So that's my position on it. Thanks.
Uh, John.
Yes, I would also like to echo Julie's comments and concerns. Some of the experts are talking about a recession or possibly a depression. There's going to be unemployment and underemployment because of all the companies that are closed, the restaurants, the venues, entertainment venues. If people aren't collecting paychecks, how can they worry about paying their taxes for, for bu, for budget support? It's, it's just, I think we, you know, it's good to hear that we could possibly extend the deadline for submitting this budget, because I would certainly recommend making cuts. The state statute allows for budget reductions, even going into negative budgets, increases. And, and, and think about the people, you know, out there, the taxpayers and the public, who may not be able to afford any increases, no less buy food. I'm going to make a motion to postpone the approval of the superintendent's 2020, 2021 budget until we make necessary revisions and non-essential cuts.
Uh, it's moved and seconded, uh, but it's, it's, I, it's, the, the problem with it is, is we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget. So maybe what you're saying is you want to, um, I forgot what the exact postponed consideration, rather than saying you want to, you want to postpone consideration to, to that time. Otherwise, your motion would be out of order. Yes, Jennifer?
I just, I just have a question and clarification. So I unders, I, I hear what you're both saying, and so just so I'm clear, Julie, you're, the budget that's being presented, of course, I can't scratch it, is, is, you're in favor of, but you're concerned about the referendum? The additional?
No, I am, I am in favor of asking for the bond money for the repairs, because I think that hits people's wallets mostly down the road, maybe a little bit this year. Nicole, you could correct me, but I think mostly, you know, that's a payback. But I'm saying that when we go and ask for the regular budget, of which we're asking for, what, a half a percent increase or whatever we're asking, and I don't remember the exact-
Point seven six.
Point seven six. I'm saying it should be zero.
You're saying it should be zero?
We shouldn't go and ask people right now for that. If there's any way, we could just not, for the optics of it, for, for everything John said. I mean, it, we're really, truly in something we've never seen in our life, and I just think it would be irresponsible not to go back and see if we could just say to people, you know what this year? We're flat. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. I, I guess for me, the other concern that I have is, when I hear John say cuts, I just, I would, I don't want to see jobs being cut. So for me, that's really, really important, and especially not cutting people's salaries, which I feel is something that seems to be a hot-button issue for some people on the board. So that for me is something that we should be really mindful of.
Can I add to that? In this budget, there's over $100,000 in non-union raises, salary raises, some are 7%, 10%, 11% higher than, for one year. So I think we should look at that, take a hard look, and that's what I mean by making some cuts.
Um, Mary, and then-
I just wanted to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just would like it to, it, it needs to be a very thorough conversation and a very even conversation, because we're not going to just cut some and not others. I, I think we're, it's a slippery slope, John, that I'm very concerned about. And I think that, I think that's going to, that's going to be a pretty deep conversation, for sure.
I'm sorry, uh-
You were going to me.
Yes, Mary was next.
Well, I don't know about the budget for this year, if we'd be able to pass that, but I think the referendum, we're going to have a lot of trouble with, especially in Washington. There's nothing for Washington to vote, and they're going to pay for 45% of that bill. And people are going to go, why are we doing this? We don't even own those buildings. That's always, that has been a problem, and it's always going to be a problem. So I think if we put anything off, maybe we should put the, okay, the referendum off until things calm down and just worry about the budget for right now.
Well, we, we could, except for one thing, Mary, is we do not fix the roof this summer. It's going to cost us $6 million to do that otherwise 1.7 million dollar job. So we really can't postpone the referendum. I, I think we're going to have to find a way to get it passed, and, and I think that that's a matter of reminding Washington the amount of money that's been put into their buildings over the last five or six years, and the fact that there's nothing left to do that, that is that urgent, that it requires a referendum to do it. I, I mean, and, and, you know, I, I don't know how we, we sell that. I don't know how we explain that, but I think we start by telling them the actual story of what there is and what people have had put into their buildings over the, over the years. But we're at the point where we have got to put the roof to referendum under any circumstances, and that's most of the referendum. I mean, that's like the third of it almost. And, and we've got to do that. We don't have any more time, because we can't wait another year. Another year, we're going to have a massive construction project on our hands there.
Could we do just the, the roof in the, at Chapag, in the referendum for, just for now, and then have another referendum?
Well, here's the, here's the other problem with that. I, I can make the same case for virtually everything in the referendum. It wasn't put in there because it wasn't important. For example, the, the 300, almost $300,000, or maybe slightly more than $300,000 for a maintenance garage for the vehicles. The reason we need that is because we evicted them from the, this north end of the school when we built the AgSTEM. And if, 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 if we have, this season, it wasn't too bad. This winter, there was hardly any snow at all. But if next winter, there's a lot of snow, and his people have to be out there trying to salt and sand the grounds with trucks that have been frozen outside overnight with snow mixed in with the salt, and it doesn't quite go out, it's ice in it, doesn't go out of the chute right, and we have a problem getting our schools ready, it means we're going to have to cancel instructional days, because we can't take care of the property. So there, everything in that referendum has, and, and of course, the roof on Burnham, on the Mansard roof on Burnham, has got to be redone, because otherwise, it's, it's failing, and the slates are coming off. So everything in there is being done, because we kicked the can down the road for many years in this district, and we've got a lot of work that has to be done. We've got 50-year-old windows on this school that we no longer, they don't make them any longer, they don't make parts for them, and every time one breaks, what are we going to do? Put up plywood on the outside of the school? That's really where we are. So on all, and, and the HVAC units on the roof, Don has been rebuilding them piece by piece by piece, but they're at the point now where we're not likely to be able to keep them in place much longer. Everything on this list is, we got to do it now. So I don't think we should postpone the referendum. I think what we should do is figure out whether or not we can, we can cut $172,490, which is what I calculated, but I'm not the whiz in math that the superintendent is, so I might get that wrong. But I think that's what I saw, about $172,000 and change. If we can figure out a way to eliminate that from the budget, we could present a flat budget. Otherwise, we have to go back to the, the drawing board. Pete? Okay. All right, Julie?
Well, I, in the years we've done budgets before, I've spent a lot of time pitching to taxpayers, why or why not to support it, and I work hard at every time, making sure our budgets pass. And I really think, yes, there'd be a handful of people who would say no to this, but I think most people would logically say that this is a long-term investment, the economy is going to recover, you know, this is cyclical, like other things that have happened in our country. So I think we can pitch that, and I would feel good about pitching this, because it makes sense, because if we don't do it, it's just going to cost us more. The short-term issue, I think, is, is much more sensitive, and I think that's where, if we could fix that, and I'm not suggesting it should be salaries, I think that should be up to the experts to decide where those cuts could be, but I just think to say it's zero budget, but this is a long-term investment, when we've recovered from this, I, I could pitch that, and, and maybe you guys could too, but that's what I think we should do.
Jennifer?
I'm, I apologize about making you repeat it, but what is, what is the dollar amount for the point seven six? Okay. So I think it's a, I, I hear what Julie's saying in terms of it being a good gesture to bring it down to a, a zero budget. The, the concern that I have, and when I say this, I, by any means, I'm not implying that the roof isn't important. Obviously, all of the items that, there's a long list of money we need to use to improve a lot of the buildings. But I, I feel like we need to be really careful here, because I, I hear the importance, I hear a lot of the importance of the, the facilities being taken care of. The education, to me, is more important than the brick and mortar. That's just my, my feeling. And I, I feel like a lot of times, the focus on cutting back seems to be on the education, the teachers, the paras, whatever it may be, the salaries, and somehow spare no expense when it comes to our vehicles and our, and our, our outdoor shed for the, for the, all of the stuff. I, I feel like we're losing sight of what the, what our, what our real job here is, and that is to give the best education to the students, and not just always worrying about facilities and all of that. So I just would like to remind everybody that that's why we're really here, so.
Well, I tell you, I would, I would agree with something in there, which is that for years, we have actually put the education first, and we put the facilities second, and that's why we have a gargantuan facilities budget. I mean, we have a capital budget right now. This, this proposed budget has got a $246,125 in capital. Last year, we had almost a million, and we cut the capital way back because of the referendum. Now, I will point out that in this capital budget, the school that gets the most money expended on it is Washington Primary School. All right? Now, we could take all the Washington- Now, we could take all the Washington primary stuff and put it in the referendum, and then take stuff out of the referendum and put it in the capital budget and play exchange-o, if that solves the problem Mary brings up. But the, the reason things were put in the capital budget versus the referendum, is the things in the referendum are, are, are the kinds of things you want to pay for long-term, not short-term. And the things in the capital budget are short-term things you want to take care of now. But we could turn the whole thing on its head and, and shift that around, if that helps. But the, but I don't think you're going to pull $172,000 out of the capital budget, unless you want to take away things like... There's ADA playground equipment that has to go into Washington Primary School. I don't see how that can wait at all. You know, replace the field hockey scoreboard, Chapag, we could take that out, that's $23,000. We could not retrofit the resource center lighting for 488. But if you do that, when you re, when you retrofit the lighting, you're retrofitting it to LED, and the effect of that is to save money on energy. So, you know, we could be taking that out and sort of, it's going to cost us more than the money we take it out. It's going to cost us another chunk of extra electricity. There's not a lot in this budget. There's concrete stoops for ABA, ADA compliance, there's additional cameras, that's about student safety. There's old water pressure tanks and, and things like that, and exterior doors and closers. ADA speakers. These are all things that impact the daily use of the...
Rather than just kind of going through the line, light items, I, I just want to give Nicole and the superintendent a chance to digest what Julie's proposing. I think it's a good proposal. But I don't think any of us expect her to come up with a five-minute decision on where, where she'd make those cuts. So I think we need to give her time to process what, what we're asking for. And at some point, she could come back to us with...
All right, well, okay, that, that's all I needed to hear, was that, that, it would, it would help for them to have time. My, the dates start to become a concern. I, I read the statute, and it appears that for any town that needs to have its budget approved by, whoops, the wrong thing here. If you have, if it has to, if it's a fiscal year ending on June 30th, which ours is, that fall on any date, the day you have to get the budget, deadlines for budget submission is any date, municipal budget deadlines. Again, it doesn't apply to us, because this order was not extensive enough. But it was giving an extra 30 days for ones that had to be done by May, on or before May 15. I don't think we have a deadline on or before May 15. I'm not sure if we have a deadline. But bottom line is, if we postpone this to the May 30 meeting, cancel the public hearing on the budget, postpone this to May 30, March 30. You're then going to, on March 30, have to have a public hearing sometime in April. And at that point in time, you can maybe get it to referendum at the end of May. It's at least 30 days. So if you don't get it done till the beginning of April, you're looking at third to fourth week of May. Fourth week of May is, the Tuesday would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So you want to try to get it into the third week, if you can. And then, so if you get it by the third week of May, and the budget fails, you have no time to get one before the taxes are due in Ju, in July. So you've got to hope that that budget passes. See, we, we'd be giving up the month of grace that we'd have to get a second shot at the budget. Now, last year's budget, I think, took two. One. It was, was the year before? There was one in recent memory that took, the year before, I think, took two. So if, if this one takes two shots to get through, because right now, people are on edge. And people are sitting out there, and they're, they're frightened, they don't know what's going to go on, and they're just not in the mood for, for different things, for new things coming out of left field. And if that, if that feeling results in a budget going down, for perfectly good budget, that they would normally approve with great margins, goes down because people are upset, we could find ourselves with a headache proceeding into July, into August, and into next fall, when we're supposed to be opening the doors. So I just want you to know what we're giving up. Maybe we have to. And maybe we have to call some special meetings to, to push it through faster. John?
Can I throw in another suggestion, along with what you're saying? We should finalize the salary increases for the non-union employees, before we put this, a final number on the budget. Then we'll know where else we would have to cut.
Well, John, we don't have, there's no salary decisions that are being made by this budget. They're merely, are budgetary items being put in, so that we know how much we might have to spend if we, if we go there. That's different than we've ever done it in the past. In the past, what would be done with salaries of the non-union people, the, the key, top, highest-paid employees in the district? What we've done in the past is, we have approved a budget without even addressing those, and later, we've approved salary changes. And what we've done is, we've pulled, we've moved money around in different spots in the budget to, to pay for them. This year, the superintendent thought it would be a novel approach to actually show you what that might cost in advance, so that you would have the ability to, to negotiate a change in salary with money to pay for it, rather than have to find the money somewhere else, in the middle of the night and the end of June, when no one's paying attention. This wasn't designed as a method of, of transparency, but apparently, it's being, you know, you're, you want to toss it back and, and debate that now.
We did it after the budget was finalized, and we ended up in negative territory for those line items.
Well, yeah, but we're, we're not bound by the line items, unlike the town budgets. Our budget, we can move stuff among line items, towns can't. They, they put a line item in, they got to stick with it. But they can have a rainy day fund. We're not allowed to have a rainy day fund, but we can move things among line items. That's the difference in the way the budgets are done. Now, if you, it, it's perfectly fine to have a discussion of what anybody's individual salary might be, but that's, the time for that is an executive session, at the point at which we're check, we're deciding on those salaries, probably in June. It's not during the budget preparation, because we'd have to do it in executive session. You can't have individual salary discussions in public, that's not fair to those people. Jennifer, and then...
Just as a reminder, that there are plenty of other things, if we were to actually discuss cutting it to a zero balance, that we could cut things other than salaries. Just as a reminder to everybody.
Pete? Question's been moved, it's not debatable. All those in favor of moving to a... Yeah.
We've have a motion over here been made, and seconded.
It's superseded by this motion. We have to vote on, on John's motion first.
So if I make a motion now to go back to that motion, then mine would supersede John's?
It depends on what your motion is. Alex, what are you thinking?
I'm just curious, I, I really just want to know how the procedure works. This is all novel to me.
Well, the proceed, the procedure, it's, it's Robert's Rules, and we had a motion on the floor to approve the budget, as the superintendent's budget is the region budget. John made a motion to postpone consideration of that until we had addressed the issue of what, how it could be reduced. Okay? He wanted to postpone consideration until the superintendent had an opportunity to work on that. That's a motion which is of the type of motion that supersedes the motion on the floor. You know, a motion to table, a motion for, to, to postpone consideration, a motion to amend, all of those jump ahead of the basic motion. If John's motion fails to postpone consideration, then we're back to Jim's motion.
Gotcha. I just was curious how it worked.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's Robert's Rules-ism.
You lawyers, what can I say?
Don't trust them.
Yeah. No, yeah, there, there's a motion, John's motion is on the floor, and Pete's called the question. So the, the first vote we're going to take is a mo, a vote on Pete's calling the question. An affirmative vote means we will then move to a mo, vote on John's motion to postpone consideration. If we have a negative vote, then we will continue debate. So this is calling the question on John's motion to postpone consideration. All those in favor? Three.
Is it so that we don't talk about it anymore?
That's correct. Voting on John, voting on Pete's calling the question would mean we'd stop debating John's motion.
And then we go to vote...
To vote on John's motion.
Without further discussion as well? Right.
Without, right. Without further discussion, we would move directly to John's motion. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Chairman votes no. So there's your 12 votes, 11 to 1, and that's the, and then we're, now we're going to move on to a vote on John's motion. All those in favor of postpone, you know, I think the motion was to postpone consideration of the, the motion on the floor, which was to make this the board's budget, until our next meeting, I guess? Motion to postpone consideration until our next meeting.
Could we potentially meet on the 23rd, which has, we had reserved as our retreat, but canceled it?
Yes.
So is that a possibility, so that it would just, it would condense it a bit?
Is there anyone who cannot meet on the 23rd? I know we'd all rather not. I agree, we'd rather not, but, but the question is, is, this is, I think, an important matter, and I think that would give you enough time, probably, to...
What if we don't have a quorum, we even not...
Well, we're, we're going to take a vote on the motion to postpone, but, but...
It's supposed to be without discussion.
You're right, it's supposed to be without discussion. Okay, so there we go. All those in favor of John's motion to postpone consideration, please signify by raising your hand. Four. Okay. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Four in favor, seven opposed. The chairman is going to vote no. Chairman is going to vote nay. So that's four to seven, the motion fails. We now are back to Jim's motion, which is a motion to whether to make this the budget of the board, or to have it further...
That's open for discussion.
Four, it was four in favor, seven oppose, eight opposed. Four in favor, eight opposed.
And you voted?
No.
No.
I voted no. So four, four in favor, eight opposed. So that was, that was the vote, so the motion failed. So now, we're back to the discussion of, of Jim's motion on the floor, which is a motion to accept, adopt this as the superintendent's budget. Pete? The 172 is still in, it hasn't been carved out, so it's... You're going to have a .76, I think it is, increase.
I, I think there's so many budget referendums. Doesn't take much for a person. What you want is, someone walk into the booth and, and vote yes on two items, ideally, okay? And, right now, we're in a very difficult situation with what's going on. My guess is they're going to pull one lever yes, and the other lever no. That's why, having been through so many budget referendums, the chance of getting people to vote yes on two, big tickets. Very difficult. I mean, I don't mind taking the gamble, I just really don't want to come back here and then get into the war with this question, on how we're going to solve the issue. If you get a big vote, a no vote on repairs, that's a big problem. Because if you get no vote on that, you're going to be sitting for another year, maybe two, or you're going to have to take some of the items out of this list. Or by now, or for the next referendum. So, those of us that have been through multiple bunch of referendums, people who are no vote in some degree, have the atmosphere for no vote on it, based on what we're holding. So the idea is, how can we get through this with the best possible possible? And, I think everybody's going to talk about that, I'd like to get everybody to think about that.
Lisa?
You called the question the last time, and I didn't get a chance to talk. And you've had plenty of time to talk, so if I could say something. Two questions. If we do a flat budget, does that include the roof, or no? Is that separate?
The, the, the roof is in the referendum, it's not in the budget. So it's totally separate. Flat budget won't affect that.
Okay. I completely agree with Julie. These are unprecedented times, but what if we took it to budget, and if it failed, then we make cuts? But we don't know, I mean, I know it's, it's tough, but it's, this is an excellent budget, and the increase is not very much. And I know even, even a little bit is a lot during this time, but why don't we just, you know, I don't know what you're going to cut, really. And like I said, you and Nicole have done an excellent job. That's my suggestion, is to send it and, and let the people tell us how they're feeling, and then we can cut from there.
I think the next one was Jim, and then Mary.
I basically mirror what Lisa has said. I, I appreciate what Julie has said, it's, it's certainly out there, we're all feeling it, but we don't really know. Yes, it's scary what the future may bring, but we don't know. I think it is best, the superintendent's done a lot of work on this budget. She's presented this budget as close to the vest as she possibly can, she believes it's in the best interest of the district. Let the people decide. If the people vote it down, they vote it down, we'll have to come back and rework it. But at .76, you know, it's not an outrageous budget, so I think it's worth sending to the district, and the people will decide, as I said. I think the harder one is going to be the referendum, quite frankly. Are they going to be on the same night, on the same...
On the same ticket, yeah, the same, the same time. Because they, they have to go to a ballot, and we're asking for them to open the voting from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 PM, an entire day, so it's...
There may be some resentment on some of these items. Certainly, the Chapag roof and the rooftop units, I mean, there's some things in here that people do need to understand, that it's a much larger expense if these things go down, but I'm not sure about the whole thing. I can, I hope for the best, but, so that's my feeling on the budget. I think let the people decide at .76.
Mary's next, and then Mike.
I also think that we should just go forward with the vote. Because if, if we take, start to take out $170,000, what are people going to think? They'll think, oh, you didn't really need it in the first place. And that's what I'm afraid of. Well, if they can cut that, then they can cut more. So I think that's a slippery slope to get into, and we should just, this is a great budget, and we should just go with it. And we should talk to the people in our communities about it.
Okay, Mike, you're next.
Just a point of information, I mean, the, the budget doesn't go out there until we, we as the board approve it. So our deliberations aren't really subject to everyone knowing all the nitty-gritty, until we decide that it's a, it's the budget, is where it needs to be. Just want to go back to the fact that Julie made a number of coaching points, to, to the extent that, you know, I, I'm changing my vote based on what she was saying, I think she's making some excellent points, and nor did she ever criticize the budget. I think everybody at the table here agrees that it's a good budget, and that if we didn't have the situation with the virus going on, we probably would have been out of here very quickly. But I don't underestimate fear, and right now, fear is at a really high level in our community and across the nation right now. And I think when we are going with two big asks, not just one, people might vote both of them down out of anger, out of feeling that we're out of touch, as Julie said, that we're not understanding that people are in crisis on many different levels. And I, I'd like to reduce that down to one big ask, rather than two, if we could, but...
Okay, I forgot who was next, Alex, I think. Two, just two points. One, to make a correction, the numbers are out there, we met with Washington today, the, the Finance Committee, so they've got the numbers. Two, if the referendum fails, there's $75,000 in the budget to cover the, the referendum, the interim financing for the referendum. So that would technically not be spent. That gets you down to 100 and, gets you down to under 100. I also feel that if you come in with a zero number, it's almost like when, when a painter comes to you and tells you it's going to be something, it ends in a thousand, you go, that's an arbitrary number. When you come in with a number that's slightly different, they go, yeah, they, they thought this out, they've come to an exact number. So that's why I favor the budget as is.
Julie?
Well, I think most people have made up their minds, but I'll just make maybe one more point, and that is, I think what I'm trying to say is, as a board, we should be in touch with the people in our towns, and what we're going to see financially, even if not... and what we're gonna see financially, even if none of us lose a family member and none of us get sick, which likely many of us will, the finances of this are just astronomical. And I just think it makes us look so out of touch to say, hey, here we are. We're asking for $4 million down the road, plus we're asking for another, you know, increase, when we could, if we really tried to say, you know what? We're asking you for long-term, but not for short-term, because we get it. We get the pain you're in. We get your businesses have closed. We get, you're not getting paid, and now you don't have a job. We get it. And I, I just feel like we're, we're gonna look like we're so out of touch if we don't show empathy to the people who have to pay for all of this.
Pete?
I hate to keep moving this on, but the, if the budget is set up, and I've lost my train of thought by listening to Julie, but if you lose, if we lose this vote, okay? Suppose you lose both of them. Where do you go? Okay, so is, is taking the 172 out, is that gonna pass when you go out again? Where, have the selectmen said anything to you?
Yes, I have.
What did they say?
They were glad that we got it to a .76.
Okay.
They were excited that it was under 1%.
Okay.
They are very well aware of the needs of the repairs that are out there. In our conversations, it was wanting to put both of them out together, because I didn't wanna look like we were doing a sleight of hand.
Okay.
Didn't wanna look like we are coming in on a low budget, and then later I would hit them with a referendum. This is an attempt to be transparent. However, what Julie's saying, I, I understand, and I'm not gonna take away that circumstances have changed. Our needs are what they are. And we did try to, to get true in the budget. We did try to put the things in the referendum that let people know, this is what you have to repair, versus trying to take it off little by little.
What did the selectmen tell you?
They were in support of what we were attempting to do.
Have you been to the finance committees yet?
Today, Alex and Nicole presented in front of Washington.
What did they say?
Was that a non-committal thank you, or a genuine?
Two spreadsheets that I did showing, one, the items on the referendum, and two, what the breakdown has been over the last three years for the budget, and what each town was responsible for.
Well, in a $22 million budget, $172,000 is peanuts.
It's .76%.
Right. So the point is, are people gonna make an issue of raising two amounts of money for the Region 12 school system? I don't know what you're all thinking. Once you lose it, you're not coming back so easily. You're gonna have to tear a lot of money out of this budget. My past experience, you don't get defeated and think you're gonna come back and pull a number or two out. You, you're gonna have to take a lot out of it to get it passed, so that you have to understand. Once the budget goes down, you need to prepare to take a lot of money out of the next referendum.
All right, Jennifer, and then John.
I just, I don't want, I feel bad, because I don't want Julie to think that's, I completely agree and hear exactly what you're saying. And I think you're right. I think the repercussions are going to be big. I hope they're not as grim as you're saying. But I, in terms of people that we know, um, but I, I do feel that the .76 is a reasonable request. I think if it was over 1%, I think, I think that it would, I would 100% support you. I think because it's under 1%, I, I'm feeling better. I, I'm with Jim. I, I'm more concerned about the referendum than I am the actual budget. That's where I am. But the importance of the roof itself is something that we can't change. Again, I question $310,000 on an, out, on a building that people are gonna look at and go, well, didn't we just build these huge barns and buildings, and we're asking for more money to house equipment? So for me, I feel like that those are the stretches that people are gonna really struggle with, much more than the .76%. But I 100% hear what you're saying, and I agree, and I think I would feel strongly if it were over 1%. But I just wanna, I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I think it is important that we, we feel connected to the community enough to hear them. And I'm concerned more about the, what we're asking for in the, the referendum.
Well, has anybody changed their mind about where they would rather go with this? Would you, you know, has anyone changed their mind to think that they'd rather see this budget reduced? I'm sorry, John, I forgot to recognize you.
If you throw in the, um, if you look at the 40-year average, .75 is probably, yeah, it's probably an average increase, maybe even on a little bit on the high side. But think about the cost to the towns if these budgets and referendums get defeated. There's additional costs. There's a cost to the towns to hold on a referendum.
Which is why it's really important that the board gets behind it and, and shares that with the community, all of us.
Actually, I don't know that that is correct, John, because I do know that in, over the last 10 or 11 years, the average increase, this is higher than the average increase for the last 10 years or so. Last 10 years has been about .45% on average. There've been higher years and lower years, but on average, that's what it's been. But on the, the four years before that, the increase for the four years before the last 10 was larger than the whole last 10. I mean, that was four, three and a half, four and a half percent a year, four and a half percent a year for each of those years. So if you go back 20, 30, 40 years, you're gonna see some healthy increase years, and then some low years. But, um, you know, so I, I just wanted to be clear about that, because I, I did actually look back for like 15 or 20 years once, and there were some real big increases before I got on the board. Alex, and then Jen.
Yeah, I don't know who thinks back 40 years, but just for a point of, of information, this year's budget was up 4.57%. And the year passed was up 3.38%. So compared to the last...
Alex, where are you getting those numbers?
Off the budgets. I have the budgets.
We had a 2.4% or so increase last year, and the year before that, it was a flat budget.
Last year's budget was 22, 808, 400. The year before was 21, 811, 409.
Oh, here it is. I found it.
What page are you on, Alex?
I don't know. I pulled these out a long time ago. I've got...
It's on page 22.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say something real quick?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
You know, I was just talking with Lisa about this. I, I think one of the points that we could all agree on is no matter how we vote, right now, we all have to get behind the budget. It, it behooves us to do that. Otherwise, we're, we're costing more money to the district at a time when we're trying to think about saving money. So I think that that's something we all get. I just wanted to say it.
Yeah, actually, I, I, can I just pick that up?
I, I see what you're saying, Alex, but, but the increases, you have to look at those net tuition, if you know the actual impact on the towns, because there were tuition dollars last year. The, the budget increase was 4.5%, but it was offset by significant tuition dollars that came in. So it was really in the twos.
But that's the budget you asked people to vote on.
No, it's the budget you asked people to vote on. And the other thing we all have to remember, those of us who were not on the board when AgSTEM was originally passed, and that is, when it, when we came into AgSTEM, we told people that there was gonna be a year, when we were a couple of years into, a year or two into construction, when we had kids and program, but no, not a lot, very much tuition, because we only had a freshman class. Then we had a freshman and sophomore class, and it would take several years for it to go on to a paying basis, which is exactly what's happening. It will, on the fourth year, it will become, it will have a surplus over the cost. And we told people about that, and when we actually came to those years, we reminded them of what we told them, and they said, you're right. You told me this, and they voted in a four and a half percent increase. And we couldn't promise them that the net was gonna be less, but the net was quite a bit less. Jen?
I'm so, I was glad Mike said that, because that was what I was raising my hand about. And I, and forgive me for asking this, but in terms, I, I remember, I don't know if it was consolidation or AgSTEM, I don't know, one of them, um, when, when the board does move forward after a vote, and is, and the board has to collectively support whatever that decision has been made. Is that correct?
I don't know if there's any requirement to collectively support it, but why would you vote in favor of something and then...
Well, because those who don't would then go out, I, I, again, it just sort of, it's, it's just to remind the board that when we collectively, as a board, vote in favor or against something, that we, it's important that the board collectively goes out into the community and supports it. Because otherwise, if not all the board members are in favor, and then try to encourage others to vote against it, it would, it just would, I, I just, I feel like there was something that happened. I'm sorry, Jim? It has...
I don't know if it's in our bylaws or...
Right.
Procedures, yes, that when the board takes a vote, whether you're for or against, the board members are supposed to support the board.
Yeah, I think that's in general is the case, that you should support what the board is doing.
I think that there's a, there's a bylaw or, I feel like that we can have this discussion before, and I think we should support those who didn't have discussions, so we're all very aware of it.
How, what our responsibility is, once we decide on something.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
And I would, I would like to...
We'll have to, we'll have to research that.
I would appreciate it.
No, I, that's something I'd be interested in.
I would like to know. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a good point. Thank you for remembering that. I, I didn't. Well, I, it, it seems to me at this point, we, we've got a division of, we have some people, maybe fewer people, who feel that we should cut the budget down to an even budget. I think Julie makes a really important point, because we're, we're asking at a time when we have, this is an extraordinary situation. I can't remember in my life anything that was like this. This is the most extraordinary public problem we've had since 9/11, and I think this may even exceed it in terms of its potential reach. And so I think, and it's certainly at the fear factor that we saw at 9/11. We're close to that fear factor. You know, to see people panic buying things from grocery stores where there's no problem with the supply chain, and there's not gonna be everyone ever wanting for a roll of their favorite paper towels, yet you, you can't find one in the stores. And, you know, when you see that, you know it's fear and it's panic. And I think Julie makes a good point. I think I've been kinda convinced that maybe we should take another run at this budget. But, um, but I think we need to do it fast, is all I'm saying. And if people were willing to come back, um, on the 23rd, I would certainly postpone it to give the superintendent and the director of finance an opportunity to take one more pass through it. I would change my vote and do that. I don't know if anybody else would. If not, then we're gonna probably go ahead and approve this budget, but that's, I'm just...
We don't have a quorum. I mean, not knowing what's gonna, everything changes daily. If we don't, I don't think we're gonna have a quorum.
Well, I, I'll put it this way. I don't know how much longer, frankly, we're gonna have meetings where we're sitting across the table from one another. We are pretty soon gonna go to electronic meetings.
But what happens if they do a national lockdown?
A national what?
Lockdown.
Well, if they do a national lockdown, we're all gonna be calling in, that's for sure. But I, I don't think, we're not gonna stop being a board of education, and we're not gonna stop running the school system, even though the schools are closed. We have a system to run. We have decisions that have to be made. We have budgets that have to be passed, or next year, if we don't pass a budget, next year, we will get this year's budget. So you will have a 0% increase. You'll get the same budget you had this year. And I don't know if, you know, it's sort of like if you don't decide, you, you decide. John?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. If we're in uncharted territory, there is no deadline. No? When we get to it, we get to it.
But of course, the problem is, that augurs in favor of the people who wanna keep the budget as it is, because if it doesn't get passed, then you're stuck with the same budget you got now, which would be the same thing you'd be talking about doing. The only question is really more optics and more what you're asking for. And I think the, the thing, the point that resonates with me, that's the reason why I'm thinking, rethinking this, that Julie made, the point that resonates with me is, does this cause people to act, if they see a budget that's going up, does that increase and heighten their fear so that they then vote against the referendum? Or it makes the referendum a harder sale? Whereas if it was a zero budget plus the referendum, where we tell them, literally, we pulled most of the capital out of that and put it into long-term, so you didn't have to pay for it all at once. This, this, this minimum, we could, we should've come here with an increased budget, but instead, we came with a flat one, recognizing your, your angst and your situation, and we pushed this spending, along with other important critical projects, into a referendum so you only have to pay a little bit every, you pay it over 10 years. You know, we pushed it down the road a little bit for you, recognizing your situation. That's a potential sale point. You know, you could, you could make that point, Julie.
Just as someone who's spent many times on the phone with hundreds of voters, if you could pitch to them that we've made concessions, it's zero for now, we need this for later, because if you don't do this later, it's gonna cost you millions more, it is such a leverage point. It is such a leverage point to be able to walk in and say, zero now, and what we really need is for later. I, I just think, given the extraordinary circumstances we're in, that would make a huge difference to guarantee that we get what we really want, which is the four and a half million down the road to fix our schools.
You gonna make a motion? Pete? Well, I don't know if the votes are there. There, there, I don't know if the votes are there. Who knows? You don't know if you don't vote, so there's no motion?
No, he didn't.
There's a motion on the floor. I mean, I'm just looking to see if there's any other motions to postpone, because that's, that, that would have to be done before this. If not, we're gonna move to, I think we'll eventually move to a motion. If no one has any more comments, um, go ahead, Lisa.
So Greg, you're saying that you would meet with Megan and Nicole just to make it a flat budget?
Well, I wouldn't meet with them. They'd have to do it. I'm...
I mean, so they, so you, you, that's what you're suggesting, that you would...
Well, I, what I would do is, I would change, if, if we were to take, if someone were to make a motion to postpone consideration, and we were gonna have a, you know, another meeting on this, I would change my vote and vote in favor of it, because I think I've been convinced by Julie and by the discussion of the board that I was not correct originally when I voted against that motion, because I think that there's an optics to it that could influence the referendum. And I think the thing we gotta remember is, who cares if the budget goes down in the sense that if, if we're gonna cut it to zero, and it goes down, and we end up with last year's budget, then it's a zero. We got the same budget we had last year. Now, we can move line items around, so we're not stuck with the $1 million in capital funding. So if we end up with that, um, that's not the thing you wanna protect. What you're really concerned about is passing that referendum, because that's the future. That's the ability to address things now while they're manageable in cost, rather than until they balloon out of control. Because the next referendum, if, if we lose the roof, the next referendum is not gonna be four and a half, it's gonna be probably 11. And so we really need to protect that, and if it means carving an extra $175,000 out of the budget, or whatever it is, 172,000, 490, out of the budget, that makes more sense to me than risking the referendum. If you're gonna bet one thing, make sure that referendum gets through. That's my thinking. And I, so that's the reason why I was thinking I voted wrong the first time, after I heard more discussion. I didn't, I got it, but I didn't quite get it. Now I do. Yes.
Ma, Megan and Nicole, are you, what, what are you, Megan, what are you thinking?
We, we did everything to true up the budget this year. I think, it, it hurts to take up 172. We will certainly, you know, move to looking for where the opportunities are to do that. It's very hard for me to sit here and say arbitrarily, I would've come in with a zero budget, because I would've come in the first time I presented with a zero budget. So this now comes about evaluating, and there's certainly things that we do, that we look at that are nice to do versus needs to do. And if it's something in which we say, this is about holding, a holding pattern versus advancing, we look at a budget a little bit differently under those, those parameters.
Jen, then Alex.
Sorry, I keep freezing my hand tonight. So as, as I've said before, I'm not in favor of cutting, uh, jobs, positions, or salaries. But if we're asking for $4 million for the referendum, is there something in the budget that we can consider taking out in terms of capital needs that we're somehow asking for in the referendum? I feel like that's a possibility. It's, it's the only way that I would consider, is if, I just, I, I'm not in favor of cutting positions and/or salaries. So maybe there's something that we can look at that could offset the referendum?
Well, I, I don't know. You don't necessarily have to cut positions or salaries. There are other things in the budget that could be, could be cut. Capital, there's about a, what did I say? It was 232,000 in capital expenditures in the budget. So there isn't a lot of room. It's not like, if we had a million-dollar capital budget, it'd be a lot easier to find 172 there. I'm not sure you can find 172 there, but you can find some good part of the 172 there, I'm sure. The other thing, there's other thing you... The other thing, there's other thing you could do is you could seriously consider increasing that referendum from 4.5 to 4.6. And put, make that six be the Washington stuff. Pull that out of the capital budget, put it in the referendum. And now you've got Washington things to tout. And now you've, you've sort of increased the referendum a little bit, reduced the budget. And then you could get to flat a lot easier from there. That's another thing they could do. But I don't know what they're, they're going to have to go through it with a fine-tooth comb and figure out what they can live without. Because you won't get the whole thing by putting the $78,000 of Washington money into the referendum. But you could do that. That would be one way of, of trying to come out with flat. And look, it doesn't look like we tried to fix anything. What we did is, we took a, we stared in the face a horrible situation with COVID-19, and we recognized that people were afraid, and we decided to give them an easier task. You know, I mean, I think that's, that's what leadership is. You know, you try to recognize where people are, and you meet, you meet them where they are, because that's where they are. They write, and they're the ones who write the checks, and they're the ones that vote. And so it's their decision. You know, we're just, we're just telling them how best to run the school system, and then they have to decide if they want to pay for it. I don't know. That's my thinking. Good point, though. But I don't want to presuppose to tell the superintendent and the director of finance what they should do, in terms of where they should find the money. But there are options.
So can I make a motion then, that we potentially postpone and have another week for consideration?
So you want to postpone to a meeting on the 23rd? Yeah, but you can vote on it again, because there's been more discussion. That's what happens when you don't call the question. You have more discussion. So it's moved and seconded. Is there further, well, there's no discussion of this, is there? No, there is discussion of this, I think. I think this one allows discussion under Robert's rules. A motion to, a motion to, a motion to call the question doesn't. But we've had a lot of discussion. Is there any, nobody had anything further on this? All right, yeah, John?
Why don't we include, in the language of the motion, to reduce the budget to as close to zero as possible?
I think, John, you're going to lose whatever vote you'd get for it at that point. Because I think what people, I think, I think, I, yeah, I think what people want to do is, they want to, they want to give the superintendent a chance to see if they can come in with a number that they can propose. Rather than just reduce it and tell them, now go cut out things. I think they want to, if they come back to us and say, look, we've gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, and the most we can find is X dollars, and it's not 172. Yeah, Jim?
I'm opposed to that. What you would do is instruct the superintendent to come in with a list and bring the budget at zero, period. She'd have to come in with a list, whether she liked it or not. I mean, the board would vote, so whether they wanted that, it's not her choice. You make the items her choice. But you would instruct the superintendent to come in with a list and bring the budget to zero.
You could do that, but it would be a different motion. The motion currently on the table is to postpone consideration for a week. Until. Right. But that's not the motion that's on the table. The motion that's on the table is to postpone consideration until, until the next Monday. All right? So that's the motion on the table. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Eight, all those opposed. All those in favor of the motion to postpone consideration for a week, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All those opposed, three. Nine to three, motion is, this is. Jim, Lisa, and Mary. Okay, so we have postponed consideration until next Monday. We will need to have a special meeting on Monday. At this point in time, do we want to start going to meetings that are not held in public? Or would you, would you rather be here together? All right, why don't we, okay, why don't we plan on a meeting being an in-person meeting? But here's what I want people to do. If you are even remotely not feeling well, or if you get exposed to anyone, would you please arrange to phone it in? Because the last thing we want to do is stand here and debate something in order to deal with a crisis, and then create one of our own. I'm sorry, what? If you want to phone in, you can phone in. You do not need to come to the meeting. You can phone in. We'll come up with some kind of a way to do that. Probably we will put, I don't know if we can bring a phone into this room.
Can we just, I think on our, our bylaws don't allow that, so maybe we can vote on allowing that?
Oh, yeah, they do. Under emergency circumstances, do they? No, the bylaws allow you to phone into a meeting, except for one meeting. The one you can't phone into is the meeting to select officers. Other than that, other than that vote, you can, you can phone in and you can vote by phone, if I'm not mistaken. I was surprised that we could too, but what I.
Just to go beyond what Greg is saying, I think even if you're not feeling well, I think if you're feeling any fear about coming into the meeting, you know, that's a legitimate fear. And I, I think I'd encourage you to call in, rather than attending in person. Because it's not worth anyone's life at this point. And even President Trump is saying, I strongly encourage gatherings of 10 or under. And if you look around the circle right now, we've got 14.
All right. According to our bylaws, there are three types of meetings under FOIA. Regular, special, and emergency, all of which will be open to the public, except for executive session. Participation by the public, either by questions, comments, inactions, or boards deliberations permitted at the board's discretion, et cetera, et cetera. Meeting communications between and among a quorum of members convening on electric chronically linked personal computers, or by a telephone conference call, or subject to FOIA. And then it goes on to say that, oh shit, where is it? That's not it. Can you, yeah, because that didn't, that's not where I thought it was. We'll let you know. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here until we look through and figure it out. I could swear, though, that I saw that there was a provision that permitted participation in voting by telephone, as long as it was not the meeting for selection of officers. I thought, I thought that was what was permitted. All right. I'll tell you what I would like to see. I would like to see us put this in a special section by itself, so we don't have to look for it in the future, every time this comes up. All right. So what else do we have here? All right, at this point in time, the next item we have on the agenda is to consider and act upon resolutions with respect to an appropriation and borrowing authorization for costs related to various improvements. This is the, this is the. Yeah, and, and the establishment of public hearing on such recommendations if approved, the referral of the projects to the planning commission of the member towns for reports pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 8-24 and other matters related there too. This has always been a controversy, because I've gotten opinions of counsel that have said we don't need to, we don't need to comply with 8-24. That's only for municipal school boards. And 8-24 is a statute that requires a referral to the planning commission, and mandatory referral to the planning commission in connection with certain projects by the, by the town, and by, by the, by the town. And those include school buildings. But this is not a project of the town. This is a project of regional school District 12. And so our current counsel has told me that we are not required to comply with that. We asked with respect to the AgSTEM project. Because we had, and I think we eventually did go there, because bond counsel refused to yield. And we may end up having to go there on this. Because bond counsel, for some reason, has got it into their head. They don't agree. But I would be willing to bet, if we asked one of his partners, we would probably get a different opinion. But there's something, I think bond counsel's concern is, this is something that they want to see when it goes to the bond market, and it goes out for review and things like that. So I, I think it's one of these abundance of caution situations.
Does it make sense to even vote on this?
No, it probably doesn't, but I, but it's on the agenda, so we have to decide if we're going to pass it on.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say, it may change.
Superintendent, you have a question?
I was going to suggest, if it's something in which the board would entertain a recess, allow us time to look at, to see what we can do. And this way, we can come back and we can present what we think would be some additional cuts. So that way, it's an.
Do you mean right now?
Have a recess now, if the board will afford us the opportunity to actually look and say what we can actually do. It's not going to be as well researched as I was like, would like, but we can certainly take a look at what is some of the things that we could potentially adjust. But my concern is, in looking at the bylaws, electronic participation right now is, is an issue. And I'm recognizing that we are in a very different time in which, we all know, public health concerns are, are taking things in a different direction. So.
Plus, it freezes us up for next Monday. We can go out to do.
All right, how long, how long of a recess do you need? 20 minutes? All right, could we take a, is there, does anyone object to our taking a recess for 20 minutes to allow them to sort this out? 20 minutes, because we have a problem with coming in electronically next time. This thing is a morass, so.
Well, couldn't we change that by voting to change it? Or is a special meeting, we're not allowed to add to the agenda?
Can't add to the agenda on a special meeting. That's an interesting concept.
Why would we do that?
But the problem is, next Monday, you're not going to have full participation. So I think that the reason to do it tonight is because tonight, we're all here. And tonight, we have their ability to go look at it and see if they can give us an answer that's reasoned. If they can't, they'll come back to us sooner and tell us no. But I'd like to take a recess for 20 minutes to give them a chance, so we can get this over with and get out of here and go home and eat our dinner, or whatever we're going home to do. All right? Is there an objection? If not, we're in recess for 20 minutes. Okay. We're back in order. Well, what have you got for us?
All right. Well, Nicole and I went and we looked at the budget. Again, looking at some of the superficial things that we can do. Again, this is about figuring out what are the needs. So the first place we went to are program improvements, and to see places that we could start reducing. And additionally, we also looked at advertising line items, as well as some of the specific salary line items for salary line items, specifically hers, mine, and some other central office staff. So at this time, I'll have Nicole give the details of where we are.
So the cuts we would propose to make, we can start on page.
Yeah, you're going to have to really shout.
The cuts we would propose to make, we would start on page 13. If you want to turn to that page of your budget. And we would propose to cut the stage curtains at Booth Free School, the additional cameras at Booth Free School, the window AC project at Washington Primary School, the additional cameras at Washington Primary School, the field hockey scoreboard, and the retrofit resource center lighting. Sure. Booth Free School stage curtains, Booth Free School additional cameras, Washington Primary School, the window AC project, and the additional cameras. Chapag Valley, replace the field hockey scoreboard and the retrofit resource lighting.
Nicole, can you elaborate on those window AC project? Is that just what they are? Air conditioners put in, in the windows?
It's AC units put into individual classroom window units, yes.
How many?
Do you know how many AC units are in the Washington Primary quote?
That one, we were looking for each classroom. And it really was the original intent of having that on, is there's been a couple of days, especially early on in the school year and late in the school year, in which we have had to look at considerably closing early. And it was specifically for this. Again, looking at the moments of, how do we cut in order to make certain that would be something additional for next year versus how we are currently operating?
Yes.
So that's 139, 650. Did I get that right?
Are we ready to move on? Page one of Exhibit A. Reduce the regional administration salary to 205. Reduce the fiscal services director salary to 127. On page three. Reduce the facilities coordinator salary to 120. And on page four.
Can you go a little slower, please? I'm having trouble finding these.
Do you want me to start back on page one?
And what is that?
The regional administration salary on page one goes to 205. Correct. The fiscal services director salary goes to 127.6, also minus 10,000. It's right beneath the regional administration. 127.6, a $10,000 reduction. On page three. Approximately 12 lines down. Facilities coordinator salary reduced to 120. Everybody with me so far? Page four. Seven lines down. Public relations reduced by $7,200 to reset it to the 1920 amount of 18,000.
72, too.
18,000. And if our math is correct, that reduces the budget 171, 716. Greg?
I'm sorry?
Am I allowed to talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, because I appreciate Meghan and Nicole going in and coming out, cutting their pay down. I'm not in support of this. This is not what I wanted, although I appreciate their effort. So this is not what I wanted for them, so.
Nothing was taken out of the capital budget and moved over to the referendum.
We have not moved, we use this unto itself. Each one is a different entity, and we're trying to treat it as such. So if it's something that we want to talk about, but at this point, the reductions that we did were program improvements and in the conversation of not looking to improve recognizing needs versus wants was a driving factor.
I would not be in favor of this. I would propose that... What was the one big item of 66,000 at Washington Primary?
There wasn't any one item. That was a bunch of little items, well, little. There were a number of projects in there. There was an ADA compliant piece of equipment for Washington Primary. There was a 22, five for the window units. Additionally...
Finding that capital budget, what page is that on?
Capital budget is on page 13.
Went through it twice. Oh, here it is.
So.
Oh, page 13. I'm looking in the Exhibit A.
Oh, so you X some things from the capital budget, but you didn't move them over to the...
Correct.
Referendum.
Correct.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't want to move them to the referendum?
That can be part of the next motion when we're talking about the repair referendum.
Yeah.
Right now, this is about the budget.
No, I understand.
And...
What are the replaced doors in Washington Primary?
So the replacing doors, as well as the cameras, were recommendations when we had a safety audit. They were noticing that some of the doors stick and no longer become egresses. This has been something that in a couple of safety reports has been brought to our attention. So it was a attempt to improve.
John?
Is there a reason why we can't move them all and take, and pay for them out of the 1% nonrecurring fund?
Well, there's no reason we can't do it. I think our philosophy on that in recent years, and maybe this is a reason to change because of the extraordinary circumstances we find ourselves, our philosophy was is to stop tapping the 1% fund every year when we get to the budget. And we pull things out of the capital thing and throw them in the 1%, because we kind of felt like the 1% needed to be built up to the point where it could help us handle capital projects. And if we just tap it for a little 20, 30, $40,000 items, we don't ever get to build it up to the level where it could actually take care of $500,000 items. But this is an extraordinary year.
I mean, there is a considerable balance, and Meghan can testify to this. The state is considering increasing the regional school districts 2% per year, so.
Nicole?
I think when the board considers the transfer from the operating account to the capital reserve might be the appropriate time to decide if you're going to use that money for these repairs rather than trying to decide that while you're discussing the budget. The board doesn't have just one bite at the capital reserve. You can use that anytime you'd like to.
I'm not sure I understand that. Say that again. You can...
You can decide to use the capital reserve fund at any time. You don't have to decide during budget discussions. So if we came to you in June and said, "We really want to put the air conditioning units in at Washington Primary," you could say, "Let's use the capital reserve fund." You don't have to make that decision tonight.
How much do we have in the capital reserve fund right now?
840,000.
And is there a reasonable expectation that we might be able to put 1% into it?
Yes.
So you'd be up to $1 million, a little over a million.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Jen?
That's okay. I just want to reiterate, I think it's great that we're using the capital fund, the capital to take. But I don't want to cut Meghan and Nicole's budget salary tonight, so I'm not...
Well, we're not actually cutting their salaries. What we're cutting is the reservoir...
But we're discussing it.
Salary increases could be drawn. Yeah, you are.
I do, I just feel it's important that I say this out loud. Please note, we have taken everything that is in Nicole's and my contract and put that in our salary line item. And that is different than how things have been handled in the past. So I know when people sit and see it looks like an increase, we are just trying to be transparent with what our contracts are worth. And it has, those are the moments in which I'm not, I'm not taking away from what is my suggestion. I put that out there. But I also just needed to say that publicly, that there was not an attempt to be in any way, shape, or form other than truing up some accounts as well, too. So please know that that's the case.
No. She doesn't have a proposed increase. Nicole is. No, but that's not, is that her salary? Is that the actual salary?
But those were, those were a place saver for when we actually do negotiate the contract.
Yeah, see, the idea was, yeah, exactly, that this year, this year, we were going to put up in, you know, money into there so that when we got to the salary negotiation, we had a place to go to pay for it without trying to drag it out of 14 holes in the budget somewhere. Same with Don's?
Same with Don's. We captured last year's increase as well as putting in proposed amounts. We took last year's increase because that was always captured in arrears and trying to move it forward so that way, we're capturing potential increases this year that existed on that line item.
Yeah, one of the reasons these numbers look, that's exactly why one of these numbers look bigger, because we never, we've never reported the increase we actually gave last year. So that pushed it up, and then you pushed more room to be able to cover something this year. We might not spend it all this year. Who knows?
Would it be possible to take all of the cuts out of the capital facilities area since they potentially could be covered in the 1% fund and leave the more controversial items, which seem to be salaries, alone?
20,000, 25,000 in salaries, basically?
And I'm going to say, whatever the board decides, I think what hit home, and Julie, we're not trying to look like it's easy for anybody, and we want to make certain that it's also not hard for this board. We need to be able to have you be able to go to the grocery store and stand by whatever decisions that you make. It is one in which, as we're looking at these things again, we're looking for transparency. We're looking to put this on the table. The question is, is asking for us to take out $172,000 going to hurt? Yep, it does because we were more transparent in how that money is spent. You know, we can't just take it out of legal because we recognize we've got two contracts to go at, trying to make certain that we're putting monies where we would need to spend it for next year. So it is one in which we do change our perspective on what we put forward, knowing what we are going into, knowing that, you know, Mike, as you said, respecting the fear that's out there. This is where we go a little bit backwards to respect that fear.
Joe?
So with these cuts, does this bring us to zero?
Well, it brings us $1,000, and $1,000 isn't going to get you a percentage point.
So let's, just being devil's advocate here, if we met in the middle, took the capital, put it toward, or put the...
1%.
1%. The 1%, if we put that into that and left the salary situation alone, does that number change at all? Is it such a small amount that you don't see that percentage?
You'd have to move $25,000. The salary deductions are, the salary account deductions are 25,000. You could take 25,000 more out of capital, and you'd get them all out of there. But Alex?
Yeah, it's 26, 374 to get to literally zero. So that, we'd have to take 26, 374 out of the 1% fund, and that would do it.
Well, but you still have capital deductions.
Oh, we still have the capital deductions that Meghan and Nicole came up with.
Right. You still have to either put those, you either have to forego them or put them in the referendum or put them out of the capital reserve.
Well, I mean, the reality is it's going to be 172,490 dollars that we were taking out of the budget and the capital fund and the 1% fund. So if we take it all out of the 1% fund, the damage is 172,490 dollars.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be the lion's share of this year's contribution, should we be able to make it, which we probably will from what Nicole is saying. So instead of, instead of putting in 200 and, or 223,000 dollars, you'd be, you'd be spending 172 of that.
Yeah. Well, there are certain things that I do agree that we should maybe, you know, X. The stage curtains, maybe, not the extra cameras. I think those are important. Scoreboard, I could see that going. And there was something else. Well, I don't know about air conditioning. I'm just taking, well, what also was pointed out is we can always come back and do those, but you have to take the money out of the capital one to do them. I mean, not the capital one, the 1% fund.
I'd just like to reiterate that the air conditioning is a problem because when it does get too hot, all the students have to come downstairs to the main level, and they've been doing that for a long time. And when you're looking at a June 20th date, you're going to be looking at a lot of hot days, and the teachers have also been having trouble with that for many, many years.
Yeah. That's why I didn't... No, the, no, he was actually saying the opposite. He thought it made sense.
I was taking out the curtain. When I meant taking out the curtain, I didn't mean taking it out of the budget. I meant taking it out of the, removing it from the budget. So, no, I think the air conditioners are important. Something like the scoreboard, curtains, stage curtains. And there was one other item that was on a different page.
I'm sorry, Mary, are you through, Alex?
No, no, yes, I'm through.
Okay, and Mary?
Since we have, why don't we take the money out of the capital facilities in the budget? And then take the whole thing out of that and then turn around and do the capital nonrecurring account, use that to pay for the 174,000 dollars.
Well, you can do that.
And just leave it at that. And we could do that immediately or when you pass, the budget is passed. We could wait until then, I would say, wait until then to move the money, remove the money from the capital nonrecurring account, and then, and then just go from there. Because it just makes no sense to me to look at people's salaries. I'm also, I'm with Jen there, no, that's not, that's a no-go for me. But these other things, they're necessary, too, but we can get to them with the capital nonrecurring account where we, and not have it in the budget. And isn't that what it's there for?
Yes, that's what, it's there for nonrecurring capital expenditures that come up from time to time. What we've used, it's funny, there's no magic to using it the way we've always used it. But what we've used it is where we had something pop out of the blue air. Like one time, we had a $70,000 repair we needed to make to the pool. And of course, there were a number of people who thought that the biggest repair we needed to make to the pool was to fill it in with dirt and close it because it's a, anyone who owns a pool, and I own one, it's a hole in the ground into which you pour money. And so that was the thought, that we could get, we could do something. We had to repair it, so it was $70,000, and we hit the nonrecurring expense. Occasionally, other funds pop up where some, there's some crying need for money to be spent on a capital item, and it's not in the budget, and so we hit that fund. And then a couple of years ago, we decided, "Let's stop hitting that fund. Let's let it build up," because what's happening is it's never able to handle a big, a big capital expenditure because we never wanted to spend it down. So we used to have it at about half a million. Now, we've put it up to 800, and this next year, we were going to take it to $1 million. And the idea was to let it grow. And then when you put 2%, you could put 4 million in a year, and it's some, 400,000 in a year. And at some point in time, you'll get that fund up to 3 or 4 million dollars, and then you don't need a referendum when something big comes up. John?
Make a motion to take the 246,125 dollars for the capital facilities improvements, take that out of, completely out of the budget, and pay for it out of the 1% fund, which we will still have approximately $600,000 balance in that fund after these, after these monies are extinguished.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion. No, you can do it at this meeting. It's, you put the budget up for us to approve. We could not approve it. We could amend it, I think.
Yeah, that would...
Oh, the 1% fund? Yeah, I don't know if we could, we could act on the 1% fund at this meeting because it's a special meeting, and we didn't put it on the agenda.
Well, then, very simply, we just X 734, that whole column from the budget. Hold on a second. Two, four, six, 125.
Either just make a motion to delete the capital items, and at another meeting, have it paid by the 1% fund, or reduce the capital budget by 176, whatever, to bring it to zero. If you either want a zero budget or a negative one budget, that's what it comes down to, I guess.
I like the negative budget even better.
Mary?
Just removes a lot of money from that account.
Let's just go with zero, like we were going to do in the first place. Take the 174 out of that, that account, and then we, how much, I have another question. How much are we going to put into the capital nonrecurring account this year?
We're limited by statute to 1% unless they fix the law.
No, I know, but how much in dollars does that represent?
Well, what's the budget? 22... So it'd be 228,000. More than what we're talking about.
So then, we wouldn't even use what we would put in.
Correct.
So that makes more sense to me. Let's just go with zero. I mean, we don't have to go crazy and go, "Let's go negative." I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Just do zero and say, "Look, we did this for you because we realize at this time that it's not a good time to do, to add anything. So we'll go with zero to help the..." help the, the people in this region. And then, we can go from there.
Okay.
So, what do I do to make that, to change that motion?
Well.
So we have to vote on that motion, or I can propose another.
I couldn't rule that John's motion is not proper, because we can't rule on the capital fund.
We, we have to amend the motion, you'd have to make a different.
Just withdraw it, and have a new motion.
Can I just respond to Mary? I don't think it's going crazy. I wish Don was here. I don't foresee, being on the facilities committee for three years now, I don't foresee having to use $600,000, especially since we've done a lot of the work.
Well.
We'll still have a good buffer.
The.
Minus 1% would do wonders in, you know, showing good faith to the public for what Julie is referring to.
I guess I disagree. I think zero is enough.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to take the 170.
2490.
Take that out of the capital facilities fund, in our budget, to be determined how to pay for those things at a later time.
Yeah, you don't, you don't need a back-end piece, all you need to say is, you want to remove 172,490 from the capital facilities budget.
That's it.
Okay.
That would be acquitted.
That's for later.
So it would reduce the budget to the precise amount of last year's budget.
I'll second it.
Move, it's moved, is there a second?
Yes.
Second. Moved and seconded, further discussion. Yes, Alex?
I just want to make sure I understand this. Would this mean that just our contribution would be that much less this given year, instead of us putting in 200?
No, you'd still put in, you would still put in the 1% into the, into the 1% fund, and then you would have, and then you could add this, you could take this 172 out of the 1% fund, but you'd still put in 1% at the end of the year. It makes no sense to put less if you've got the money.
Isn't it a matter, if I may?
Yeah, Jim.
At the next meeting, where this is on the agenda, you could move to spend 172 on these items out of the current capital 1% fund.
Right.
But you can't do it tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
Right, yeah, I don't think he's trying to do that, I think he's just asking if you would just simply offset it against your 1%.
You could do it beforehand, you wouldn't have to wait till the end of the budget.
Yeah, you would do it before, and then at the end of the year, if you had 1% left over, you'd put your whole 1% in, that's usually the way it's done. Yeah, yeah, yep. Any further discussion? All right, there.
If you, am I mean?
Yeah, Jim.
Paul, do you have an opinion on this, what we're about to do?
What are you going to do? This is far away.
Are you asking my opinion on moving the 172,490?
Of taking it out of the budget, knowing that it's likely to be taken out of the 1% fund and paid for, just, since you're our financial advisor to the, to the district, what do you think? Do you see any traps, anything, any reason it shouldn't be done?
The one downside that I see is that we are potentially going to be seeking a $4.5 million bond issue, and our rating was improved last year by Moody's, because of the balance in that capital reserve fund, which are going to reduce by 30% since the last time Moody's saw it. When Moody's looked at that capital reserve fund, there was 981,000 in it, and that weighed, they listed that as a factor of our improved bond rating.
Not an easy decision, is it?
That would be my only concern.
On balance, do you have a recommendation?
On what the balance should be in the account?
Balance, you have a recommendation whether this, what apparently may happen here should happen, for the best interest of the district?
I think that there should be, I think that some of the things that are asked for in capital facilities are necessary, and I think it's worth paying for those things out of the capital reserve fund, but I think that each one should be looked at individually and decided, we should decide which ones are the most prudent to do, instead of doing all of them.
It doesn't really have to be decided tonight, that would not be decided tonight.
Correct.
So we can do what she's proposed, which is take them all out of the operating budget, and then at the next meeting that it's on an agenda, decide which ones we want to pay for out of the 1% fund?
Correct.
And might you come back with a recommended list?
I could do that, yes.
Thank you.
Mike?
And just, Nicole, just because I'm woefully ignorant in this area, I mean, economics right now are in turmoil with what's going on, and I would have to think that that somehow would in fact affect Moody's and the bond market as well, would, even if we did reduce by 30%, because there's so many other bigger fish to fry, I would think that possibly that would weigh in our favor, but maybe I'm totally off on that, what do you think?
So I think your Moody's rating and the bond market are two completely different things. Your Moody's rating is what gives you your borrowing capacity in the bond market. You don't want your Moody's rating to slip, because regardless of what the bond market looks like, it's like your credit rating, right? If the, if interest rates on a mortgage skyrocket, you still have more borrowing power if your credit score is good. So you don't want to affect your Moody's rating if, if you can help it. So the bond market, yes, is in turmoil, and it remains to be seen what impact that's going to have on our various borrowings that we're seeking, but I think reducing our rating can only hurt us, not help us.
And would you, in a conversation with somebody from Moody's, or another person who's knowledgeable, would you be able to get a number that they would probably definitely say, we're reducing? Or is that always going to be a big question mark?
Well, you want to be very careful, because, so, you want to be strategic, you ask Moody's to give you a rating, when you feel that you're in a good position to either hold fast or get an increase. I wouldn't go back to Moody's and give them information that I was planning on reducing a balance, so I wouldn't approach Moody's. What would happen is, if they decided to look at Region 12 and previous ratings, as we go back to the bond market, someone may ask them to look at our rating as the public offering statements are issued, and they may then request information from us, and when Moody asks you for information, you should give it. So that's the point at which they would see that that account had depleted by 30%.
Alex?
It won't have depleted by 30% immediately, because we're going to leg in these items. So depending on when it is and how we've leg them in, it may have only dropped 10% at the time we, we go for our bonds. So, I, yeah, I see the downside, but the other thing being is, interest rates have dropped also, so how that affects us, I don't know.
Well, no, but the rate that went to zero is what, the federal?
Fed funds.
Funds rate. But the, the question I have for, for Nicole is, is there even a bond market right now? Could you even go out and find any buyers for municipal bonds at this point?
I don't think so, not, I don't think anybody is trying to find municipal bonds this week, they're waiting to see what the market's going to do, day by day.
Because that usually, at the end of the month, is when those go through? So, boy, you know, there's, I bet you, you couldn't even sell bonds right now, so that's a problem. Jim?
Yeah, just, I want to make sure I'm clear on the motion. So the motion is, reduce the capital facilities budget by sufficient amount to bring the operating budget to zero. So the items that are removed are going to be up to the superintendent? Okay.
Mary?
But in the end, if we wait to use those funds, the capital reserve fund, if we do, if we wait until we've already put, moved the 2%, the 1% over for the year, it will, even if we use that amount, that, that number will, that $840,000 will still go up, it won't go down.
Yeah, but, but Mary, we're going to have to go to the market for bonds.
Right.
Before we put that contribution, and we don't make that contribution till the very end of the year, and we see that we've made it through, it's June, and we're not going to spend any more money, and we've got 1% left over, that's when we put it in. We don't put it in until then, but you're going to go to the bond market now, and with any luck, if we get this thing through referendum in May, you're going to go to the bond market before that, and, and ask them.
Wait a second, I thought the ban was going to carry us into next year. $75,000 ban is going to carry that $4.5 million into the end of next year.
Well, if you.
And then you take the bonds.
I mean, we're at a point now where I don't think there's a bond market in the United States.
So we, so we would have to move, we'd have to take the money out of the capital non-recurring account, if the refer, if the referendum passes? No, we'd have to take the money out of the capital non-recurring account earlier than when we, after we put the 1% in. We have to do it ahead of time?
It depends when you want to spend the money. If you want the air conditioners before June, you're going to have to do it before June.
Right.
If you don't care about the air conditioners until next year, you can, you can put it, and you can move it into next year's considerations.
Got it.
Well.
If I may, I thought you ruled John's motion improper, because he tried to do something that's not on.
Yeah, I, I had to rule John's out of order, because it involved dealing with the 1% fund, which we can't do without a, without an agenda item. And we can't add agenda items at a special meeting.
I got you.
So we, normally, you can add an item with a two-thirds vote, but not in a special meeting, only on a regularly scheduled meeting. So, we're on to the, the motion that's on the floor right now, is the motion to reduce the capital reserve account by a sufficient amount to make the budget balance at zero, budget increase zero, so that would, we believe to be $172,490. I'm just going to, now that everybody's sort of had their say, is there anyone else who wants to talk about this? Because I'd like to say something, but I don't want to do it before everybody's had a chance. This is a hard decision, and it's a hard decision because I don't want to see us take a risk to our bond rating. If we ever get a bond market back, we're going to need to go out there and, and get these things sold, and I hate to see that change, because that's going to change the calculation. As it is, we're concerned that this, that the bans, or that the bonds, once we go out to bond on the 10-year, 4.5 million, that that's going to be half a million dollars a year, and I don't want to see that number inch up to $600,000 a year, because we lose our rating. And, but on the other hand, I recognize that Julie is concerned, and she's, her concerns are well-founded, that we need to somehow find a way to come out of here without asking for an increase. And, so I think we've got two competing problems here, and I think just hitting the 1% fund is, is not the best idea, but I don't know where else you're going to go for it. We could forego some of these expenditures for another year, and put them into the following year's budget, but then you're, you're kicking the can down the road another year, and that's one of the problems we've had in this district. We keep kicking the can down the road on capital improvements, and that's why we have antiquated buildings that have huge capital needs. And, and I thought we were going to try to break that habit, and get back in the habit of proper funding, and so this, this troubles me, that we're headed off in this direction of playing 1% games again, especially if it injures our bond rating. Probably it won't, they probably won't look back at us, so we could be worried about nothing, but who knows? We're in the crazy zone now. I mean, who would have, if you had told me six months ago that we were going to have no municipal bond market, that the economy was going to crater, that people were looking at unemployment at phenomenal levels, and we would have 22 and 1/2 million people in the hospital in intensive care, I would have told you, you were nuts. And that's where we are. That we would be holding meetings, hiding under our beds with bags over our heads, in order to avoid, you know, coming into contact with one another, I would have told you, you were nuts, and yet here we are. So before we take a momentous vote, because we're getting close to the point at which we're going to need a vote just to stay in business, because at 10 o'clock, we've got to shut down under our rules, we're about 10 minutes from that now, 10 or 12 minutes from that. And we still have to get to the referendum. What are you, what is your pleasure? Are you, are you willing to take the risk on the bond rating in order to zero out the budget, because we think that the, otherwise, we're risking the referendum? I mean, this is, this is not easy, folks.
Why don't we take a vote?
You want to say something first? Why'd you push the button?
All right, why don't we go to the vote then? The vote is to reduce the budget by a sufficient amount, which we believe to be 172,490, in order to have the budget not have a zero, have a zero increase. All right? All those in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, all those, 9, all those opposed? 9 to 3.
The vote passes.
No, but you can change your vote, if you, okay, you're voting no, so that's 4 to 8, it's 8 to 4, to reduce the budget by 172,490, from the capital reserve.
I'm not changing my vote.
Okay. You can change your vote, up until, the time the meeting is adjourned, so after that, you can't change your vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we set a referendum for the budget. Whatever the, whatever the date is.
We don't do the date yet.
It's early May, isn't it, usually?
No, actually, what you don't want is a referendum, you want a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, a public hearing.
Yeah, you want to set it for a public hearing. Do you have a date for us, for the public hearing?
Okay, there we go. We need to first be, as far as the public hearing date that we were seeking, we were originally looking at March 30th.
So moved.
But before, can we still do that? We don't have an issue with March 30th, with the governor's orders and all that? I haven't read all of his orders.
I'm still processing myself, so we can set the date, and if we choose, we are not able to, we can amend it, but at this point, it's looking to go forward, so we can continue in the budget processing.
All right, so a motion to establish a date? I'm sorry? No, we're discussing E. E had two parts, adopt the budget. Now, we still have to take a vote to adopt the budget, so before we take the vote on the referendum, Jim, could I ask you to withdraw that motion, and instead, let's take a vote to adopt the budget, which is now flat withdrawn?
Greg, just to clarify, this 172 is coming out of the capital, the facilities repair?
Yes.
Okay, not the cuts that.
That's correct.
Megan and Nicole recommended.
That's correct. It was, it was out of the capital reserve, the capital facilities budget.
That column.
Yeah, the items on page 13, that's correct.
Thank you.
Decide what they are.
734, capital facilities, that's where the money comes from. Okay, now, could we have a mo, could we, could you withdraw your motion, Jim?
I did.
Okay, now, could we have a motion to adopt this budget as the Board of Education's budget?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's unanimous. Now, can we establish, now, I would accept a motion to establish a date for a refer, district public, district budget public hearing, March 30.
So moved.
Moved, a second? Okay, discussion. Mary?
I, Megan, I just don't think we can do that, because how can we invite the public into a building that's supposed to be closed, for a public hearing? I don't think that we can do that legally, according to the governor's.
Oh, I don't think, the governor told us we had to stop educating students in the building, didn't say we couldn't bring adults in.
So our issue becomes, is that we need 30 days before the actual referendum is held, so we need to be able to post a referendum date, and so that's where we came about, the March 30th date.
How about April 1st? We've gone, we've.
Mary, Mary, I'll tell you why this is a fool's errand, because the governor could tomorrow decide that he's going to take you out to April 15.
Right, that's true.
So, you know, you're just, you'll, you'll be chasing your tail, is really what it comes down to.
Uh.
I mean, obviously, if we can't legally use the building, I think we can, it's our building, we can use it, the governor didn't say you, you had to stay in your house. Now, that's the interesting question, what if we all get restricted to our homes? Take one thing at a time, we'll take what's on the table.
They restricted public assemblies to under 100.
Actually, they've, they've said 10 now.
We can't really get that many people.
Get out the word that somebody.
Like you say, it's, it's strange times.
Well, you know, and it could be done electronically, so that's, that is possible. We could do it as a, if it looked like we were going to get a lot of people, or we thought. thought a suspicion, we could make it into a telephone meeting as long as the public got the number.
Dress like Greg.
That's right. Okay.
Second.
Moved and, it's moved and seconded to establish March 30th as the hearing. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's unanimous. Okay, now, the next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution to borrow the money for the 4.5 million dollar. Actually, I probably have to read this into the record. Let me try that again. I'm getting punchy.
Do you have to vote on extending your meeting to after 10 o'clock?
We have five minutes.
We have four minutes. Let's see where we get with this.
Thank you.
All right. I would entertain a motion to consider and act upon resolutions with respect to an appropriation and borrowing authorization for costs related to various improvements and related work at Chapag Valley School, Burnham School, and Booth Free School. The establishment of a public hearing on such recommendations, if approved, the referral of the projects to the planning commissions of the member towns for reports pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 8-24 and other matters related thereto. Do you have a specific resolution we need?
That's the one. So that came to us through our council. That's, Nicole, if you want to speak to, that was what we needed to have on our agenda in order for them to help us move forward as we move and seek the funding if referendum is indeed passed through our towns.
Yeah, but this hasn't even asked for an amount. This doesn't sound like the right referendum.
Nope.
Motion.
Did Debbie put the full resolutions in the packet? There should be, in the packet, there should be a full resolution. It's a page and a half.
I don't know. We need to have the resolution read then and I don't know if I can...
Is this item D? No.
It should be F because the last one was E.
Officers of the Board of Education and Superintendent are authorized to...
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't see it.
It's F and it's a page and a half.
Oh, here it is. I got it. I've got it. Okay. It's all the way on the far side of the screen. That's why. Okay, and the resolution is the resolution set forth in your materials. Do we have to read this? I guess you have to read this as a record. Okay, resolution of the Board of Education, Regional School District Number 12, March 16, 2020. Item F, resolve that the officers of the Board of Education, the superintendent are authorized and directed to cause a district meeting to be called for the purpose of conducting a public hearing at Chapag Valley School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut on March 30, 2020 at 7:00 PM with respect to the following recommendations of the Board, which recommendations are hereby approved. One, that $4,500,000 be appropriated for costs related to various improvements and related work at Chapag Valley School, Burnham School, and Booth Free School, contemplated to include, A, at Chapag Valley School, roof replacement, perimeter heating replacement, replacement of two boilers, window replacement, construction of a district maintenance garage, replacement of HVAC, rooftop units, installation of a 10,000 gallon water tank and other related work, equipment and improvements. B, at Burnham School, roof replacement, elevator repairs and other related work, equipment and improvements. And C, at Booth Free School, siding replacement, installation of a new facility sign and other related work, equipment and improvements. The District's Finance and Operations Committee shall serve as the, as the school building committee for the projects and shall be authorized to determine the scope particulars of each project and may reduce or modify the scope of each project as desirable and the entire appropriation may be spent on the project so reduced, as so reduced or modified. Two, that $4,500,000 bonds and temporary notes of the district be authorized to finance the appropriation. The amount of the bonds and notes authorized shall be reduced by the amount of grants, if any, received by the district for the projects, not separately appropriated to pay project costs. Three, that the Chairman and the Treasurer or such officer or body delegated such, whoops, sorry, or such officer or body delegated such authority by the Board of Education be authorized to require the District and its member towns to comply with applicable federal income tax requirements for tax-exempt bonds and to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of the holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information. Four, that the Board of Education be authorized to approve the entering into contracts for the projects and the Board of Education or such officer or body to whom the Board delegates such authority be authorized to approve the expenditure of said appropriation and such other matters deemed desirable or necessary to complete the projects. Five, that appropriation and bond and temporary note authorization be submitted to the referendum vote of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in the member towns of the district. Further resolved, that the members of the Board of Education hold a meeting at Chapag Valley School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut on Monday, March 30, 2020, following the aforesaid public hearing to act on the recommendation of the Board, which, recommendations of the Board, which are to be considered at the public hearing. Further resolved, that the applicable portions of the 2020 Chapag Valley School, Burnham